Good morning and welcome to everyone here and anybody watching at home. This is the joint public hearing of the Senate and House Transportation Committees. And this is very exciting because we don't often do joint hearings, so I'm very excited about it. Our committees are focused on a bicameral solution to improve Pennsylvania's ignition interlock law, which is the topic of today's joint hearing. Act 33 of 2016 was championed by Senator John Rafferty, who previously chaired the Senate Transportation Committee. Act 33 created the Ignition Interlock Limited License to allow a person to serve a portion of their license suspension with ignition interlock, which complied with federal rules at the time. As a result, we have two restricted licenses with distinct purposes under our DUI laws: the Ignition Interlock License and the Ignition Interlock Limited License. Today, we'll collect testimony from PennDOT, the court system, ignition interlock vendors, and an individual required to install ignition interlock. According to PennDOT's most recent crash facts and statistics report from 2023, drinking and driving remains a top safety issue in Pennsylvania, and 25% of all traffic fatalities were alcohol-related. Last week, PennDOT announced that traffic fatalities in 2024 were the second lowest recorded since record-keeping began in 1928, and the number of fatalities involving impaired drivers dropped from 429 in 2023 to 342 last year. Driving under the influence of alcohol, drugs, or any combination is dangerous with serious consequences, and we have families in attendance today who have lost a loved one due to a DUI crime. An ignition interlock is required for all DUI offenses except a first offense with low blood alcohol content. This requirement is in addition to a variety of fines, license suspensions, treatment, and even imprisonment. Our legislative offices have been flooded with ignition interlock questions such as the date a person is eligible to install ignition interlock and receive the one-year credit from PennDOT. I applaud my colleagues, Senator Phillips Hill and Senator Langerhold, who sponsored legislation multiple times, including this session's Senate Bill 697, to fix the ignition interlock process. I also want to applaud Chairman Nielsen and Chairman Benninghoff for sponsoring forthcoming legislation to reform the ignition interlock program. I'm looking forward to today's joint hearing and learning more from our testifiers, including Secretary Mike Carroll. Acknowledge the following Senate members in attendance. We have Senator Langerhold, Senator Flynn, who will introduce himself in a bit. We have, let's see, who else do we have? Senator Nick Miller. We've got Senator Kristin Phillips Hill in the audience, so thank you for being here. Good morning. So I now defer to Senator Flynn for opening remarks, followed by Chairman Nielsen and Chairman Benninghoff. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Alcohol-impaired driving continues to be a persistent, preventable threat on our roadways. In 2023 alone, more than 12,000 lives were lost due to impaired driving nationwide. Here in Pennsylvania, 321 people died in alcohol-related crashes, representing more than 25% of all motor vehicle fatalities in the Commonwealth. One of the most proven tools for reducing impaired driving is the ignition interlock device. Research consistently shows that ignition interlocks reduce repeat offenses by up to 75% while installed. These devices also serve as a general deterrent discouraging individuals from driving impaired before a first offense even occurs. Unfortunately, Pennsylvania's ignition interlock statutes are in serious need of modernization. The current process is overly complicated and very difficult to navigate. In fact, one of the most common concerns I hear from constituents involve confusion with the ignition interlock process. Other states have adopted universal ignition interlock laws requiring interlocks for all DUI offenders, having seen measurable declines in alcohol-related crashes. The National Transportation Safety Board has repeatedly urged Pennsylvania to implement these reforms, but key recommendations remain unaddressed. I appreciate that we are holding this hearing today to hear directly from experts and practitioners involved in this system, and I want to especially thank Judge Michael Berice of La Cueno County Court of Common Pleas for joining us today. Judge Berice's leadership in DUI courts has earned him national recognition, and his insights are invaluable in this discussion. So I'm hopeful to hear the testimony today that we're going to hear to directly have meaningful reforms in Pennsylvania's ignition interlock laws, reforms that will improve public safety and support successful rehabilitation. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I want to thank Chair Ward and Chair Flynn for working with Chairman Benninghoff and myself to schedule today's hearing. This is the first joint transportation hearing since 2019, so we're excited about today's public display of cooperation on an issue that affects all our districts and everyone across the Commonwealth. During our tenure as Chairman of the House Transportation Committee, Chairman Benninghoff and I have often been contacted about the bureaucratic issues related to our interlock laws today. Applying for obtaining an ignition interlock license is complicated, confusing, and expensive process. As a result, it is common for drivers with ignition interlock devices to have these devices installed in their vehicles for several months, sometimes even longer, years, than what has been ordered by the court. This delay results in a loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars in employment opportunities, not only because the driver violated any requirements by the court, but due to the slow processing time and errors submitting the necessary paperwork. Let me be clear: I firmly believe that a DUI offense should have serious penalties. However, those penalties should not be held up due to overly complicated application procedures and bureaucratic red tape. We need to cut that red tape. If the court requires you to get an ignition interlock device based on the laws enacted by the General Assembly, then that process should be accessible and understandable for every Pennsylvanian. Chairman Benninghoff and I are working on bipartisan legislation to make some of these common sense changes to our ignition interlock law. That bill is still being developed alongside stakeholders. Today's testimony by everyone today will help us all develop a good, sound law. I'd be remiss not to mention our colleagues that are here today with us. I have Representative Joe Hohenstein, Representative General Mara, Representative Christine Sappi, Representative Melissa Schusterman, Representative Alec Brinkavage, Representative Donna Shuren, and Representative Brian Smith. And I must say, today's a busy day for all of us, so you'll see some of the Senate members and some of the House members bounce in and out, but that doesn't mean there's any lack of commitment to this issue. This is an issue that we talk about on a regular basis. And last but not least, I'd like to introduce my co-chair, Chairman Benninghoff.
Thank you, and welcome to the Senate. It is nice that we can work together and talk about some common issues. As a former county coroner, as you can imagine, I'm obviously very interested in this issue and how we can deter behavior. I'm also the last one to want some more government involvement in people's lives, but fundamentally, there's a lot of people who get injured outside of their own behavior, and sometimes a lot of people getting injured from somebody else's poor choices. So without further ado, I would just as soon have some of the experts testify us to here today, but I will remind those that are doing that, our offices are inundated with too much time and energy being spent on this kind of redundancy, and it's very frustrating. I'm all about being punitive for those who decide to break the law, but I think we need to be doing it more efficiently at a time. We've got people living on a space station. Something tells me we can do this better, smarter, faster, and a heck of a lot more efficient. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd also like to recognize Senator Brown has joined us here. So we'll go right to the first panel, this way we can get started. Due to the busy schedule, we want to make sure we move along. The first panel is ready. Chase Glaser, who is a board member for the SAFE Coalition; Jake Pregler, who is a resident of Malvern in Chester County. We will now swear in our first panel if able. Will the panelists please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is true and correct to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief? You may be swayed. Thank you all for joining us here today, and please start at your...
Good morning, Chairman Nielsen, Chairman Benninghoff, Chairwoman Ward, Chairman Flynn, all members of the House and Senate Transportation Committees. My name is Chase Glasser. I'm a board member of the SAFE Coalition. We seek to expand access to lifesaving technologies like ignition interlock devices. We're very pleased to be able to offer proponent testimony today and are very grateful for this joint hearing, understand the significance of it, and are deeply appreciative of that and the interest in the issue. Ignition interlocks are in-car breathalyzers that prevent the starting of a vehicle if the driver's impaired. This is a proven technology with a decades-long track record of effectiveness. They reduce recidivism by over 70%, and, as stated, are a valuable part of the architecture of laws combating impaired driving used by all repeat and some first offenders. But I am not here to discuss whether or not drunk driving is an issue, or whether or not these devices are effective, but rather ways that we can modernize and simplify a process that's used by many Pennsylvanians. The application for Pennsylvania's ignition interlock program is complex, cumbersome, and full of opportunities for improvement. This is not the result of male intent, but simply a program in need of updating. In Pennsylvania, the current male-only process starts when a DUI offender receives a notice of suspension letter. This can be over two weeks after conviction or their acceptance into accelerated rehabilitative disposition, ARD, commonly used pretrial intervention system. So this notice does tell a person when their license goes suspended, which is often months later, but it provides only general information about interlock eligibility and application. As stated, Act 33 of 2016 lays out minimum suspension terms that participants must serve before they can use an interlock in some cases, but to actually calculate the date of eligibility, participants have to use a seven-page chart, go through their offenses, and try to determine the date that they are eligible. This is confusing, particularly in cases where there are multiple license suspensions coming from one action. So a classic example of this is a DUI with a chemical test refusal. So as a result of this, many people panic, and they install an interlock immediately before their suspension period begins, incur unnecessary costs. This is understandable. When they call PennDOT, try to get information about it, they're generally referred to a fairly general call center where people do not have information about the actual actions that are being taken against somebody's license, rather just they can only see what's being processed. So apart from that, PennDOT will reject Ignition Interlock Limited License, IIL, petitions that are sent in too early, and they will not process them until the day that the suspension period starts. If anything's sent in incorrectly, there's a two- to three-week turnaround to get a correction letter sent out, get the changes notated, and sent back and processed. So the end result of this is confusion and delays that are suffered by all program participants. And concretely, as stated, these delays prevent a large portion of Pennsylvania DUI offenders, particularly those that are trying to use the ARD program, from using the ignition interlock option. The proposed legislation that you will consider decreases the processing time by an estimated 20 to 30 days or more. This legislation will allow participants to be approved for an interlock before they install. It'll take the guesswork out of that application process. It will also shorten the required PennDOT response time for IIL applications from 20 days to 14 days, and require three-to-five-day turnaround for communications to electronic communications. It'll also create a unified ignition interlock driver's license, an IIDL, rather than the current bifurcated system. And the legislation will give the participants the option to install the interlock for any part or all of the suspension, rather than trying to calculate a date of eligibility to install and petition for the interlock license. Bill will also allow treatment court program participants to use an interlock while they complete their program requirements. This is a noted best practice. And the end result of this will be a clearer and more inviting process of receiving an interlock and the license that goes with it. This will incentivize program participation, which will keep roads safer. However, we feel that this bill only marks the starting point of ways that we can improve the interlock program in Pennsylvania. Having an online portal where all interlock license application processing occurs would greatly reduce processing time. This is something Massachusetts does. At the very least, PennDOT should include email communications to program participants instead of only U.S. mail. PennDOT actually gathers emails, as seen in Appendix 6, but does not often use them for communications. This does occur at certain times. You can see that in Appendix 9, but it doesn't occur often, and we'd like to see that happen more. Conversely, PennDOT could simplify the application and process to apply for an interlock license by mailing application materials, restoration requirements, and a temporary license to go to a driver's license center before the suspension starts. I know it's being discussed right now that they send out the application process information and restoration requirements before, but opening up certain driver's license centers where drivers could go and get their interlock application taken care of would increase the accessibility of the interlock program. Finally, DUI offenders who have current license suspensions for other traffic safety issues or even non-driving-related suspensions should be able to get an interlock license with the completion of other suspensions being banked and occurring after the completion of the interlock term instead of being ineligible for an interlock as they are now. In the same vein, currently, interlock terms are often interrupted for the serving of additional license suspensions, so things like running a red light or fleeing and eluding, and this causes people to incur substantial cost when they have to uninstall then install again to try to serve the staggered period of suspensions. Above all, we're deeply grateful for the impending introduction of this legislation, legislation we strongly, strongly support. We're also very grateful for PennDOT for their willingness to participate in this conversation and work with us collaboratively to try to make a process that works for everybody. Whether we're vendors, legislators, administrators, or judges, we owe those who are trying to do the right thing following a poor decision a process worthy of their efforts. I welcome any questions that you may have. Should any of your questions concern the technical aspects of PennDOT's processes as they pertain to program participants, I may refer you to my colleague Kathy Riley. I want to end by saying that, as interlock vendors, we receive many, many complaints about the onerous nature of the system, and I've read through hundreds of them, and I feel that they are all very succinctly and eloquently bound in the testimony given by Mr. Pregler to my right.
Thank you, Chase. Kathy, is there anything you want to add to Chase's testimony? And for the members' information, I'd like to wait till after the whole panel testifies before we take any questions. This way, we can run through the questions at once. Do you want to add anything to Chase's testimony, Kathy, please?
No, not at all.
Thank you. Well, Jake, you're up.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is Jake Pregler, and I'm here to share my experience with Pennsylvania's Ignition Interlock Limited License, or ILL, application process, as we all know it. To put simply, the current ILL process is tedious, antiquated, and very confusing. It's a system that leaves cooperative citizens in the dark about when they're eligible, and it unfairly impacts their personal and professional lives, again, specifically people who are trying to do the right thing and comply extensively with the law. Anything related to the ILL, it takes an average, I've actually calculated this, seven to eight tries to have the system put you on hold to speak with somebody who, in the end, is unable to provide clear and concise guidance. Payments have been or need to be made through outdated payment channels like cashier's checks, and there's often a lack of information available online other than a convoluted rubric, which is adjusted frequently and tough to navigate. Hence, there's no firm, clear way to know where you stand in the process. That means people like me are forced to start spending serious money on car repairs after their car is set idle for a year, insurance, interlock installation, without even knowing if we're approved. In my case, I'm not perfect. I received a DUI in July 2023. I surrendered my license as requested on December 8, 2023, per my surrender date, and received the DL 644 form, which officially began my suspension. My PennDOT paperwork showed that I'd be eligible June 23, 2025. But in March this year, 2025, I began preparing early. I inquired with the DMV to ask when I should be eligible and getting everything in order: repairs, inspection, insurance, choosing an interlock vendor, and I was told, quote, "It appears Jake Pregler is eligible now," based on the ILL eligibility chart. So I was under the impression that I could apply six months after the suspension started and nine months into an 18-month suspension. Based on this guidance and what was printed on PennDOT's own documents, I proceeded forward: spent $1,400 on car repairs, $200 for inspection, $250 for my first month of insurance, which is still getting charged monthly without my license. Then I paid $250 to get set up with an ILL vendor, Smart Start, not including their extra fees. Also spent $500 on the DMV application fee, which is a duplicate license fee, application fee, restoration fee, et cetera. And at that point, I wanted to be sure, so I spoke with a PennDOT employee named Kathy, and she encouraged me to speak with the local legislative liaison office. That's when I hit a wall. My liaison contacted PennDOT directly and was told that I wasn't eligible, not even close. So after following all the instructions, spending thousands of dollars, and checking with multiple sources, I'm left with the simple questions: When am I eligible if the RLL letter that I have is inaccurate? How do I get a straight answer? When can I advise and communicate to my boss and company that I'm eligible to travel for work and support business and grow my life professionally? This process doesn't just cost money, it costs time, mental energy, and professional credibility. I work as an account engineer, and my company's been very supportive throughout this process, but they need to know when I can legally drive again, and right now, I still don't have a clear answer to give them. Again, I understand that I place myself in a suboptimal position due to my own actions. However, I've taken every necessary step to demonstrate my commitment to safe driving. This process should be a productive partnership to rehab and support citizens back to an eligible transportation channel after serving a disciplinary probation period without a license. Not having a clear answer isn't just frustrating, it's kind of unacceptable. So we need a better system. We all are here because we know that. I strongly urge the committee to consider modernizing the ILL process, which would see eligibility charts status clearly, enable applicants to submit applications digitally, make payments electronically, and access clear, consistent guidance without calling overloaded phone lines. This is a fixable program, and with a streamlined and modern approach, we can prevent other Pennsylvanians from going through what I and many others have endured. People trying to get back on their feet shouldn't be punished by a broken system. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Pregler. Before we go on, I want to say we are joined online by Rep. Siegel, Representative Schmidt, Representative Hamm, and I'd also like to welcome Senator Brown and Senator Robinson, who are here in person. At this time, I'd like to recognize Senator Robinson for a question. No? Okay, all right, come on.
I just wanted to say thank you for the introduction.
Listen, as long as we don't have to free Jeep tours this year, Wayne and I are doing okay.
Weather's nice this weekend.
You want to start us off? Chairwoman Ward, please start us off.
So we're going to start with some questions. Mine is for Mr. Glasser. And first of all, thank you all for being here, especially Jake. I really appreciate you being here, and we can't make a system better if we don't know what the issues are, and so I thank you for being here. It's very important here to testimony. But Mr. Glasser, it's a two-part question. What are the rules for a person who owns multiple cars? We've had that in our office.
Kathy, make sure I'm holding me harmless here. Is it all cars owned and operated?
No.
Or is it that we're no longer doing that?
No. Under Act 33, that went into effect August 25 to 2017, was signed into Bill 2016, only one vehicle is required to install with the ignition interlock, but that is the only vehicle that they can utilize during the program.
Yeah, you can't utilize anything without the interlock.
Correct.
If you have the interlock in one car, you have to use that car.
Correct. Now, they can install multiple if they choose to do so, but we are only requiring one vehicle under Act 33.
Okay. And so what are the rules for a person with an inoperable car or no car at all?
Would it follow the same?
No. No. If the vehicle is inoperable, they should take the registration. Right now, it's registered in their name, and Eileen Lee with PADUI Association can correct me, but if it's registered in their name, then they are going to be required to do the interlock. But if it's non-ownership of vehicle, or if the vehicle truly does not run and they sign a document, they will serve out their full suspension time, then they will apply for what they call is an interlock restricted license. The vendors, one of the interlock vendors have to certify that either vehicle's not owned and/or is inoperable. The client will sign a notarized statement to that effect. They complete the DL 21SC, and that's electronically submitted to PennDOT. When the client has issued the interlock restricted license, they will carry that for one year to satisfy the interlock requirement.
Okay, thank you. And just one last question for Mr. Glasser. Are there any medical exemptions or special accommodations for a person with a breathing disorder? So if they have a CPAP or something like that, or if they have any kind of pulmonary issue?
Yeah, I believe there is, where we can look at the breath volume that they're required to put in. That can be revised down for people with a medical condition that would prevent them from giving as robust of a sample as somebody without that condition.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. Now I'd like to recognize Senator Langerhold.
Good morning. Thank you for testimony. I have a quick question and then I guess a comment, but to what extent you may be able to answer that? Of the issues that you see or doing your research with individuals that are having difficulty navigating this process and the complexities of this, and I think our district office sees maybe two to three of these a month, same situation, same, I mean, identical to the frustration that we see. I'm assuming that the bulk of those may be unrepresented by an attorney. I don't know if, do you know, or they are represented by attorneys, and it's still?
What I can speak to, Senator Langerhold, is the clients that have called me are represented by attorneys or public defenders. And yeah, they're aware of what the process is, but like Mr. Pregler, who was represented by attorney, did research online and still was confused by the different processes, especially with the eligibility charts, as though they read as though multiple suspensions can be stacked and take, you know, half the time is served, and then they can, you know, get the interlock installed and be approved, but that's not necessarily the case. Because from what I understand, back in, I think it was the end of '22, beginning of '23, it was, the law was reviewed and said Act 33 never accounted for stacking a suspension. So that's where a lot of the confusion came in on multiple offenses, is when are they actually eligible? And from what I've experienced with my clients, is PennDOT will give them a date. They just say they'll contact, if they apply too early, they're denied, and so we'll reach out and contact you when you're, you know, to resubmit the paperwork. But as of today, I don't know, one of the clients that I've worked with has been contacted to resubmit. Does that answer your question?
Yes. And do you know if that is still something covered within the scope of representation of, say, a public defender? Would they still handle that at that level or not? I mean, typically, if you're dealing with that suspension, it may be outside of the scope. It may not be if you don't have private counsel. If you don't answer that, if you don't know, that's fine.
Well, what I can speak to is annually, Pennsylvania criminal defense lawyers have a joint meeting with the Public Defenders Association, and it's a criminal law defense meeting, two days every year, and I do know that they, interlock is discussed during that. And I talked to a lot of the public defenders that attend that conference and have for years. So I would like to think that they're educated, and if not, they know that they can reach out and ask.
Thank you. And then just by way of comment, there's legislation that see Senator Kristin Phillips Hill here, who her and I have co-sponsored Senate Bill 697, which will address one piece of this, maybe not the overall issue, but dealing with interlock, speaking to your concern, which would... would, in the petition, that it would make it, it does not have to be installed before the petition. You install, you do the petition. If it's approved, then the vendor would install it then after. So that'd be maybe alleviate one issue, or definitely on the cost component with that. And I think that, so that Senate Bill 697 is there. So I look forward to this committee running it and the House passing it probably maybe by next week, if you guys can move on that. Just kidding. Thank you. Thank you for your question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. My phone's breaking up. What was that? Chairman Benioff.
Thank you very much, all three of you, for your testimony. To Jake, I wanted to specifically say thank you. It's not easy to come before the public and admit that you had a legal altercation and in return, share your experience, but I think it's very helpful, especially for our offices, because this is kind of a common thing that we hear. I'm trying to get a better comprehension on the timeframe of when, obviously, the DUI was July 2023. You get this message in March of '25, quote unquote, "It appears Jake Pregrler is now eligible for the ILL." Not to be, unfortunately, more complicated than you're told in June 23, 2025, that you're not eligible. We've got two years going on here. Was it ever identified what this snafu was? It's, did you think it was a human error? The computer talked to us wrong and the stars just lined up? What, I mean, it just makes no sense to me how difficult this could be.
Chairman Benioff, I agree. I still don't have an accurate date. The RRL eligibility letter outlines June 23rd, 2025.
So it wasn't identified that you had a pass problem somehow? The comment about you being eligible in March 2025 was premature because of other information? Nothing's been identified why you got one comment assuring you you could do this and the second comment delaying it for months, years?
Yeah. I'm not sure.
To this date, you still don't have the eligibility to drive?
No, I don't, which is why I'm here trying to understand what date I can articulate to myself professionally, personally, when I can drive again.
And just for the listeners and people who may not be here, if you were willing to share, original sentencing, how long were you told that you'd be suspended?
One month or one year for the DUI and then 18 months for a chemical test refusal.
For a total of driver's suspension of almost 30 months? My math is correct?
Plus 12.
Okay.
Yeah, 30 months.
And you're at what point now? Since my math's not that fast?
Like 18 months in. But then again, again, the convoluted rubrics outline that six months into your one-year suspension, you're eligible for the ILL. And then eight months into your eight, eight or 10 months into your 18-month chemical test suspension, you're eligible. So with those stacked on top, I would believe that I was eligible around June timeframe. But when I called in in March, just proactively speaking with the DMV office, the individual said, hey, you know what? You look eligible now per the ILL chart I'm looking at. She had her boss look, hop on. She said that it also looked eligible, but again, she made the comment, this isn't for certain. You still have to send the application in and get deemed approved or denied.
You had to send that application in by snail mail?
I have sent the application in, but I haven't had a response yet.
And that had to be by snail mail?
Yes, snail mail.
I mean, I actually have a problem with that, but that's a discussion for another day, because obviously, we see this in bill pain in general. The receiver says, I never got in the mail. The sender says, I never got your check in the mail. And you get the seesaw back and forth. At the end of the day, our goal today is obviously clean this up, take advantage of today's technology, make it more efficient. And I do appreciate you coming forth and sharing your experience because it's very humbling, but it's helpful for us to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Benioff.
Thank you, Chairman. Representative Sharon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I second Chairman Benioff's comments and your willingness to be here today, Jake. And I just have one follow-up question. With regards to all the back and forth, did any of the people you spoke to tell you that the fees you paid would be applied to future applications? Did they return your funds?
Well, I sent a cashier's check and personal check because, yeah, the chemical test refusal fee has to be cashier's check. I sent all that in, but I haven't had a response yet as to when, as to whether or not it's been approved yet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I echo the thank you for coming forward today and explaining your problem and issue because I'm sure we'll address that with our next panel a little bit, so you might want to stick around. But not car repairs, all that other stuff. What did it cost you? I mean, you got the DUI, dollars and cents, lawyers, that kind of thing, fines. Was there a number you put on that? It's something that people should know because this is a big number. This isn't just getting like a ticket.
Apologies on that.
Yeah, just pull it a little closer for me.
Chairman Nielsen. So it's the DUI fees, the fees you have to pay to the court, the fees you have to pay to the lawyer. It's the increased cost of Ubers and Lifts that you're going to have to take to get around once the license is suspended. I'd say $20,000 to $25,000 for sure. It's, and then not to mention the increase, the inflated insurance costs that you're going to have once you do get your insurance back, whatever that difference is, tack that on. Significant.
So if anything we learned today, I, something to take with you, you see a whole bunch of us up here and working in a bicameral bipartisan manner to address this. So it's like very unusual that we all do this together, and you being here will make us work harder to try and solve this problem, and I thank you for that. And I thank the panel for coming today and sharing your thoughts and questions. Are there any other further questions? Representative Schustaman. Grab the microphone, please, Rep. There's one. Yes, there is. Thank you.
Jake, thanks for being here. I cover portions of Malvern. During your testimony, you mentioned cashier's check. If you can't drive, you're catching an Uber to the bank, getting a cashier's check, catching another Uber to get it in the right place. Now, other fees, could they be paid in a different way? So that is my very small question. Thank you.
Yes, PennDOT does give an option for paying these fees online. Instead of a cashier's check for the chemical test refusal, I recommend that they go online, and they can pay for the chemical test refusal and the restoration fee online. I always say, print off a copy and then turn that receipt in with your petition, just in case it hasn't caught up to the restoration requirements letter yet. But they do have the option of paying it online. But if it's the regular restoration fee, that can be a personal check along with the application fee, the duplicate license fee. But if it is a chemical test refusal and they don't have the means of paying it online, then that has to be either certified check, certified bank check, or money order, are the two ways you can pay that. Okay?
Okay, I'd like to, the first panel is now excused, and I'd like to call the second panel up to the table. The panelists include Secretary of Transportation Michael Carroll, Deputy Secretary for Driver and Vehicle Services Kara Templeton, Director of Drivers Licensing, D O Aruro. If I butcher your name, you got to tell me. The Honorable Michael Barassi from Lackawanna County Courts, common, please. Berace? I'm sorry, Senator. As they're approaching the dais, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about the championship eagles coming into the Capitol today. And I know everybody was so excited to hear that. And I promised the Chairwoman we wouldn't argue about that here today because all those, I am afraid.
How many Super Bowls, Mr. Chairman?
Warned by the executive directors of the Senate, not to mention this, but I just, I just can't. I wear my tie. I just can't.
Mr. Chairman, what, how many Super Bowls is that for Philadelphia?
I didn't recognize you, Senator. We will now swear on our second panel. If you're able, panelists, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is true and correct to the best of your knowledge, information, and belief? Thank you. Mr. Secretary, we will start with you and your team from PennDOT, then we move on to the judge.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to all the chairs and to the members of the Senate and House Transportation Committees for this hearing today. It's important. To my right is D O Arroyo from PennDOT's Bureau of Driver Licensing, and to his right is Kara Templeton, the Deputy Secretary for Driver and Vehicle Services. I will brag for a minute, and it probably highlights the need for this meeting. When I was in the House, like all of you, I had these same experiences with folks trying to navigate ignition interlock. D O, to my right, was the, in my view, and this may sound a little odd, the go-to person when it came to sorting out whether somebody are qualified for one of the two ignition interlock licenses, and if so, when. To say that the current process is flawed would be the understatement of the century. This has been obvious to me for a long time when I was in the House. And when I was named by the governor to be the Secretary of Transportation, it was clear to me that changes needed to be made to the vehicle code with respect to ignition interlock. I came to learn shortly after I was a secretary that Judge Berace from Lackawanna County and other stakeholders were aware of the flaws in the current regiment and were already, had established a work group to try and develop language that resulted in the proposal that was given to both the House and Senate that reflect what we think are smart changes that reflect the need to have a sanction that works for folks that have a DUI or other such offenses, but at the same time, make them eligible to receive the license that they deserve based on the current statute. So I will thank D O and Kara for their good work. This is admittedly complicated. It really is. And Act 33, I know, was an effort to try and, you know, speak to the world of ignition interlock and the nuances that were, that were embedded in that act. But we're here today for a reason, and that is that this needs to be fixed. I, of course, will not read the testimony that was provided. You have that, and you can read it at your convenience. I know this. We need to fix this. It is wildly unfair for folks like the gentleman that we just heard a moment ago try and navigate this. Senator Langreath offered, you know, the attorneys or the public defenders being able to help respectfully. I doubt that they could do that either. Without having the full grasp of what's on someone's driver record, even having a restoration requirements letter, likely is not enough to be able to determine what product you are eligible for and when you're eligible for it with the current regiment that's in place. It's just, there's no way for an average person to be able to sort this out. So we have to fix this. I'm thrilled that Judge Berace and others have embraced the need to advance this proposal. I'm very hopeful that the members of the House and Senate will embrace as a starting point for the discussion, the language that PennDOT has provided to both chambers that speak to the changes that we think are important in Title 75. And I will be happy to take questions along with my PennDOT team to try and put some finer points on, again, admittedly complicated material here.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Your Honor, please, if you would.
Good morning, and Chairs and members of the House and Senate, I want to thank you for the opportunity to address you today. As a former district attorney and on the Board of Directors for the National DA's Association, I was a strong proponent of mandatory sentences and license suspensions. But as the chairperson of the National Drug Courts and the Pennsylvania Drug Courts, as well as being a judge for 25 years in the DUI and drug courts, I have realized that we really have contrary goals that we're trying to accomplish. First, obviously, is we want to make sure there is a deterrent, and we want to make sure the laws are enforced and that we have a safe community and that the DUI offender is in fact paying a price for their crime. But the reality is, whether it be the individual in treatment court or whether it be the individuals that are on probation, we are expecting these people to go ahead, get a job. We want them to go to rehabilitation. We want them to be good family members and good members of society. But at the same time, we're taking away their license. I believe this bill that allows for an immediate ignition interlock is a way of making sure that our communities are safe and that also a price is being paid. As you know, there's four different principles in regard to sentencing, whether it be deterrence, whether it be retribution, rehabilitation, or incapacitation. We have to realize that at some point, they're going to be back on the road. And the one thing we know is that many of the people, I can tell you from my own experience in my own court, that many of the individuals that have to have random testing, that have to go before their probation officer, before their case manager, before their treatment provider, are still driving even though they don't have a license. And that's by their own statements. They're not, they're not hiding it. They're saying, how in God's name can we do all the things that you ask us to do and be productive and not have a license? So the reality is, we in fact are fostering a system that's having people drive without a license. If we had an ignition interlock, we would know, in fact, that the person was driving and that they weren't drinking. So I think it's incumbent this time that it really is not only an archaic system that we have in place, but that we have responsibly to make sure that these people can earn their right back to drive and also be monitored appropriately for public safety. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Chairman Benioff.
That was fast. I said one question. I already got it. First of all, to the panel, thank you for being here. Kara, D O, Mike, pardon me, Smith, Secretary, Judge. Judge, you and I go back to my policy Chairman days when you were very helpful with the opioid addiction stuff, and I am very impressed with your continued engagement in your committee on these issues. I just wanted to echo something you said because, you know, I look at crime and think about, you know, what's the goal of the law enforcement judicial system? It's to identify crimes, try to prevent crimes, have someone pay a price for crime they committed, and then hopefully rehabilitate them to their productive in society. And I'm glad that you said your closing comments on that. We have now created a system that is forcing people into committing additional crimes in order to be able to survive and feed their families. That's not what government's purpose for, and it's almost contradictory, if not laughable, that we are creating that. It's actually kind of sad. Laughable is probably not the right term. So the other question I have along those lines is, in a perfect world, do we have enough, and maybe this is for the Secretary even more directly, do we have enough agencies or installers to make sure this can be done efficiently? Because that seems to sometimes be a problem within our district offices. And I love to know that there's not enough people getting DUIs, that we have too many installers, but do you think statewide we have enough places for people to get this done in a reasonable? Again, you're going to get somebody else to drive you there, so.
So we have eight approved vendors. It doesn't mean additional vendors can come forward if there's, you know, an additional, you know, demand. But the short answer to your question is, I think there's plenty of capacity to be able to meet the installation needs of the universe of folks that may qualify for the ignition interlock should the changes proposed get enacted.
Not being devil's advocate, but if we make the system much more efficient and it's done more timely, does that make it any more of a problem or where the installers still have plenty of time to do that?
I have great faith that the installers would be able to meet the, meet the demand. And the, the goal should be for all of us to determine who's eligible, have them navigate that system seamlessly, and then have the equipment installed so that they're operating the vehicle safely.
Again, I'm a pro law enforcement guy like many others, but at the end of the day, I also want it to be effective and not so punitive that we're causing people to cause more problems in a time when we're having such shortage in workers. You know, some are being shut out of employment. Their employers can only be so tolerable, and they say, I'm sorry, but part of your job is driving. You're gone. And we can't have that in a job market. So thank you all for your testimony and your expertise on this issue.
Thank you, Chair. And Benioff. Chairman Flynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Several testimonies describe PennDOT's current interlock application process as delayed and uncommunicative, with resilience on US mail, no real-time updates. Can you explain why these delays persist and what internal challenges prevent a more responsive, like digital-free kind of approach?
We could spend a half an hour describing all of the nuances here, but there are mechanical steps that steps that have to unfold that lead to the additional information that is added to a driver record, you know? And circumstances change depending on whether there's an ARD, whether it's a DUI conviction, what the prior offenses were, refusal added in for good measure. But suffice to say that the defendant has the opportunity to, is going to appear in court likely, and then the disposition of that case results in the court notifying PennDOT. There may even be an ALPC step in between. I'm not sure. So the county court would submit to the Association, Associate of Pennsylvania Courts, who then notifies PennDOT. So there are mechanical steps that happen before PennDOT even becomes aware of the conviction of the ARD. I think it's fair to say that everybody would be eager to see all of that consolidated as much as possible. And then the notifications that PennDOT sends out establishing an effective date of suspension, 21 days into the future from the date of letter, and then a driver's ability to make application for all this stuff, Senator, there's a lot of steps there. And I'm not sure that we can consolidate all of those down to a couple of days. That seems aggressive. But can we do better? Of course. And can, especially speaking for PennDOT, I'm not going to, you know, offer an opinion on what steps the county courts or the ALPC can take, but from the PennDOT perspective, the first thing that we have to do is comply with the law. So Title 75 is the Bible for us when it comes to how we implement all of this. And so to the extent that the law has changed to give us more flexibility to consolidate some of these steps, we are happy to do that. And my presence here today and PennDOT's embracing of this legislative proposal should at least highlight the fact that we understand the complexities here, the delays here, and the need to fix it.
Thanks, Mr. Secretary. And Judge Beras, a quick question for you. What example would you give as being a court comm, please, Judge, and your experience with the way it currently exists that, an example to you that made you say this law has to change? The way this is rolled out has to change. How many times did you just shake your head and just feel like you were hitting a wall? Or is there a specific case you can give us that?
I think, Senator, the truth is that almost every week I'm experiencing some problems, not only in my court, but from other judges that are saying how broke the system is. And as was mentioned beforehand, rehabilitation really is our goal. We want to see changed behavior. Obviously, we have the stick, but we're really hoping that the individual is going to make the changes. And it's difficult when we are working with that person, especially in our DUI courts, as you are aware from individuals you know. They've gone years without having their license back and really with no answers to when they're going to get it back. And the reality is, as was mentioned by the Chair, it's difficult when you're watching this person make great changes in their life. They're reunited with their family, they're back working, they really have a huge change, and yet we have their license. And for the courts, we feel somewhat responsible of saying, what do we need to do to address this issue? Because we are expecting this individual to do all of these other projects for us, and yet we have their license. So it's not just one case, it's really a repeated course of conduct for years now.
Thank you. Thank you. Chairwoman Ward.
Thank you. We had a constituent contact our office about, after being cited in another state for operating a vehicle under a suspended license. In this case, the constituent was authorized to drive with the ignition interlock. Can PennDOT address this issue without legislating?
They're operating the vehicle in another state that has the ignition interlock in it?
They were cited in another state for operating a vehicle under a suspended license. The constituent was authorized to drive with an ignition interlock.
So for me, if you have the ignition interlock, your license isn't suspended anymore. So I'm not sure of the foundation for the citation in the other state. It's going to be difficult to me, for me, to speak to the laws in other states in terms of how they treat ignition interlocks. But in Pennsylvania, if an Ohio resident, for example, with the same fact pattern and an Ohio driver's license, Ohio ignition interlock, were to be operating in Blair County, it's my understanding, and I can be corrected, that we would consider that a valid license provided they're complying with the terms of their ignition interlock in the other state.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, correct. Senator, just if you want to talk offline about the individual, happy to learn more about the, but so much of a story like that is dependent heavily on the details related to what's happening. And, you know, there are many nuances to that story.
Mr. Secretary, if I can jump on that real quick, if I may, Chairwoman. So my license is suspended for, say, the 30 months, and I get the interlock. It's still actually under suspension here in Pennsylvania with that interlock in it. And that's what we're talking about, because I had the same situation back home. It was showing up in New Jersey as suspended, even though I had the interlock system in it. I believe that's what we're trying to talk about. And that looks like an administrative fix that we can do, that if that interlock comes in, I don't know if you lighten that suspension or if there's something we can do to make it suspension light. I don't know, because it's still showing up. Because until you, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, until you serve out that entire sentence, you're not, that suspension isn't quite lifted.
So let's have Dios take a stab at this one.
And if we can.
The situation you're describing would lead me to believe that the individual was in possession of an ignition interlock limited license. An ignition interlock limited license is issued to someone who's under suspension. So someone under suspension can be issued an ignition interlock limited license, which will allow them to operate a vehicle with the ignition interlock device. They're legally authorized to drive in Pennsylvania with the ignition interlock device. If traveling out of state, what we've advised customers since 2016, since Act 33 of 2016, is to contact the state that you're going to be traveling in, because not all states recognize other states' limited licenses.
Okay. Great. Yeah, that is it. Because it was Maryland, probably, yeah. Another question I have, the legislative proposal from PennDOT removes the hard license suspension from all DUI offenses. Can PennDOT provide an explanation on removing this penalty? And also, does PennDOT have a recommendation for an alternative penalty in lieu of the hard license suspension?
So this probably speaks to what the judge was talking about a little while ago, and that is the desire to reconcile the need for someone to have a driver's license to be able to meet the conditions of their sentence and, at the same time, be able to be a productive member of the society and not put them in a position to drive while suspended. And to be fair, driving while suspended for DUI is even more of an aggressive penalty than a driving under suspension garden variety. So the PennDOT proposal, as you describe it, is really a proposal that is the product of the good work of the stakeholders as well as PennDOT. So I wouldn't describe it as PennDOT's proposal, it's a product that is the result of the work of many. And again, it's, you know full well, Senator, you know, the original bill as proposed seldom makes it to the governor's desk. There's always amendments that are offered and approved in chambers. So it's the opening of the discussion for us. The General Assembly, of course, will have their say with respect to how this unfolds. But it's what we think is a fair estimate with respect to a sanction. I would offer that it's still a sanction for someone to have ignition interlock. They're not allowed to drive any vehicle they want. It has to be a vehicle with ignition interlock. And it also makes sure that they're not driving drunk again. And at the same time, they are often husbands and wives, responsible for children and trying to get to and from work or school. It's admittedly complicated stuff. I understand the foundation for the question, that there's, somebody has, you know, made a life mistake with respect to drinking and driving. And, you know, what the sanction for that is, is ultimately the question before all of us. Ignition interlock, in my view, was an option that spoke to the desire to put folks back on the road in a safe way, but at the same time, there's still limitation with respect to their ability to operate a vehicle. It's going to be the vehicle with the ignition interlock.
Great. That's, thank you. I appreciate that. So this session, Senator Phillips Hill and Senator Leggero have the bill we talked about, Senate Bill 697, which was recently referred to the Senate Transportation Committee. Do you have a position yet on the bill?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I'll double-check it. I know that the judge and Senator Phillips Hill had a sidebar before the hearing, and I'll let the judge offer his commentary.
Obviously, at this time, the court, I'm speaking for myself, would love to see some remedies to this situation. It's because of the legislative language that was originally there that caused the problem for the Supreme Court in several of the cases. And so at this time, it really does need a legislative fix. What that is, is up to the legislation.
Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you. Your input's very important to me, for sure, to all of us.
One thing I would like to address in the question that you asked the Secretary in regard to the lack of a hard suspension. It's almost like, you know, say no to drugs, and we have mandatory minimums. We can't arrest our way out of it, and we can't just suspend our way out of it. If we don't look to say, what are we going to do for public safety, which I think ignition interlock addresses, and also the ability to get rehabilitation, the ability to do all the other things that they need to do as a productive citizen, we're just doing that for the retribution, small p, politics of saying, we want a hammer. There's an effective way of having a hammer without making the situation worse, which I believe we're doing if the person's driving anyway, they don't have insurance, and all the other collateral problems that go with it.
What about subsequent DUIs?
So again, I think when we go subsequent, that has to change in regard to saying, at what point does, as I mentioned, there's four different purposes or goals of sentencing. One of them is incapacitation. If a person is shown the fact that they can't have rehabilitation, then the courts and legislation have to say, okay, what do we have to do for incapacitation?
Good. Great.
Just to be crystal clear, if you have ignition interlock and there's a subsequent DUI, you lose the ignition interlock. You lose, you get suspended.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Holdenstein.
Thank you, Chair.
Go Birds.
I have a question about process, and I really appreciate, Judge, your coming here, and Secretary, you as well. But this may actually be a question more for the Director and for the Deputy Secretary. When we think of the two silos of the court administrative process and the court's system and the PennDOT system, I'm interested in knowing, at what levels is communication occurring? Obviously, Mr. Pregler had a problem that occurred because of how a sentence was interpreted in one way as being stacked rather than being concurrent, and that, you know, that that has led to this lack of clarity and uncertainty that seems to be the hallmark of the problems that we're seeing. Is it not so much, you know, what is being done or decided as how that is being communicated and understood within the two silos? And so one question in particular is, is there any type of joint training for magistrate judges, common pleas judges, PennDOT staffers, PennDOT district staffers, to be able to identify the issues that come up within, or maybe not even just training, but a committee or a council that would have members from both of the bureaucratic systems that need to be talking to each other better?
So the first thing that I think about with that question, and I thought about it as I listened to the testimony of the gentleman who had been down this path, is, you know, contacting PennDOT and, you know, the multiple ways people can contact PennDOT. You know, visit a driver's center, call an 800 number, go to a legislative district office for them to call PennDOT. So the entry points for us are many. There's no scenario that I can imagine where everybody that takes that call at the entry point would have enough depthful knowledge of all of this to be able to answer those questions. And so I would be hopeful that somebody at an entry point would say, not prepared to answer that question as to whether or not you're eligible for ignition interlock or, frankly, a probationary license or occupational limited license. The nuances are so great. So I would hope that that entry effort would result in ending up with Dios and his team that would be more skillful with respect to how this works. I think I'll, and the judge can speak for himself, there's going to be more challenges when it comes to PennDOT here than it would be to court system. I mean, the court system is going to dispose of the matter as they will and communicate the disposition of the case to PennDOT, and then we add the data to the driver's record and then the sanctions flow from there. So I'm not sure that there's tons of, that would be necessary with respect to how the court handles this. So really, Rep, it boils down to, how does PennDOT communicate with the drivers? I will highlight that the proposal that we have before you takes the questions out of that by virtue of the fact that PennDOT will upfront notify the driver upon the receipt of the sanction that they're eligible for this certain product, the newly created singular ignition interlock license, that they're eligible for it and when, and we provide the forms necessary to be able to complete the mechanical steps to get there. So in my view, the proposal that's before us takes away much of the uncertainty relative to, am I eligible? If so, when? How do I do that? We will be proactive with respect to, yes, you're eligible for the new product, here's the day, and by the way, here's the form and instructions on how to be able to comply with all that.
Thank you. Senator Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll be quick, because that was actually representative, what I was thinking over this way. Judge, great to see you here. Thank you for your work with the drug courts as well, was, that seems to be the initial confusion of when the suspension starts from the court to PennDOT. And so my question was to you, with your experience, to say, you know, is there something on the court level, caseloads, communication? But it seems like, as the Secretary said, it seems to be more on the work that needs improvement, probably more from the PennDOT side. Is there anything on the court side that you think could help, you know, with that initial start from the courts to PennDOT?
Senator, your short answer is no. I was going to say, judges wouldn't make mistakes like that, but we know better than that. But the reality is, all of that is really administrative. So the court really only has before it what the sentence is going to be. Everything else in regard to the suspension and the time and all of that really goes with PennDOT. We have, really, our hands, we have nothing to do with it whatsoever.
Just to add, Senator, and so, right, so absent that additional information, there's no way a court officer, any court officer, is going to be able to provide guidance to the defendant with respect to what they're eligible for and when, because the totality of the driver record speaks to their eligibility for the products.
Yeah, thank you. And it was a great question prior, and just something I wanted clarity as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Secretary, I'm so glad you talked about how to fix this, and it's something, some stuff seems like easier than others. The gentleman earlier today spoke about how he can't go into a driver's license center and get help. Is that something that your department's been looking at to try and do? I know we're busy with the Real ID, and there's lines six blocks long, and I get all that, but it just seems like a little something, and I'd ask that you would not only do that, but as the gentleman sitting in the back today, maybe the legislative staff can grab him and get him some information so we can help him through this process. I would ask that you would do that.
You can count on that our team will coordinate with the gentleman and make sure that whatever questions he has, we will answer them in as much detail as he needs. When it comes to driver centers and going to driver centers, I'd be hesitant to commit to that, only because to ask those folks to become experts on this would be a challenge. But again, the legislation that you have... But again, the legislation that you have, Chair, takes the suspense out of this and should remove the need for too many questions. If we're going to highlight that they're eligible for the ignition interlock under the proposed language and give them the forms to complete that, and we take away the two different ignition interlock licenses consolidated into a single one, I think much of the suspense of all this can be eliminated, which is in the interest of PennDOT and drivers with respect to this, the proposal that we have.
Many in this room, Judge, know my background as a construction electrician, and in the construction field, I'm sure you see some people, and it's compounds, like you said, because they, maybe DUI, and then they have to drive to go to work, because the building's built, they got to move around. Then it's suspension, it's driving without that license and driving again and driving again and driving again. I mean, I've had colleagues or people that I know, you know, they're 10 years in, and they can't, you know, some people never will get their license back.
And there's no hope for them either.
No hope. And they don't even, you know, they don't even drink no more, and they don't even take that chance, and they don't even take that chance because they just have to feed their families, just like you testified to today. And that's why I want to thank you for your perspective, because that's a real-life situation that not, it doesn't hit every family, but it hits a whole lot. It really does. But I thank you all for coming today, and hopefully, we can all come together in the near future and keep the working group going and get some real good legislation passed this session and not kick this can down the road any further. And I'd like to turn the meeting over to my Chairwoman Ward to close this out.
Thank you. This went very smoothly. I was worried about Representative Nielsen, but he did, he did well.
They over.
But I would like to thank Chairman Nielsen, Chairman Benninghoff, Chairman Flynn, all of our testifiers, especially, you know, Judge Beres and Secretary Carroll, and everyone who came to give us input today, because it's really important. It's a broken system. We do have to fix it, and we need, we need input from everybody. So I want to thank you again. The Senate Transportation Committee is going to stand in recess until a call of the Chair. Thank you.